Welcome to the February sixth, twenty twenty four, school committee meeting here at the PDC Center at the high school. My name is Anthony Tinnarrelli, I call this meeting to order. I will start with introductions to my line.
Bari Teek, student representative.
Jeff Boe.
Becky Stanton.
Mike Woodlock, assistant superintendent. Hi, Mike Flanagan, superintendent.
Danielle Athanas.
Justine Puma.
Rob Mullen.
Good evening, Joe Messina, business administrator.
At this time, I ask that everyone please stand for the president.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I'll make a motion to approve the school committee minutes for one twenty-three, one twenty-three executive session minutes, and the one thirty budget subcommittee meetings, all of twenty twenty-four.
So moved?
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Upstained? That carries six zero zero. Citizen time? Seeing none. Correspondence?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. What just took transpired tonight was I did have the chair sign the amended project funding agreement from the MSBA. As we know, when we were talking about this several months ago, that we were hoping for the reimbursement for the middle school would be about four point one million dollars. We did receive the official documentation that the reimbursement from the MSBA will be four point six seven five million dollars, which obviously is a great number for us and a great number for the community of Tingsborough. So we received two signatures tonight, and we'll get that off to the MSBA by the end of the week. So that's all good there.
Perfect. Thank you. Personnel?
None at this time.
Bari, student representative?
Alright, so the elementary school will be holding a presentation later in their meeting, within the late meeting during, where they will share their update. At the middle school, The Wizard of Oz was a huge success for middle and high school, the middle and high school theater program. Four awesome shows had excellent attendance, and our actors were their very best at each show. Our student council prepared a meal that fed sixty adults and children at the Anne Marie House this past Tuesday. Family Promise of Greater Nashville at Anne Marie House aims to end homelessness at one family at a time. Through safe housing and education, Family Promise guides families as they break the cycle and rise from homelessness to sustainable independence. Thank you to Ms. Cassidy for helping our students lend a hand to those in need. Thank you to THS for letting us use their kitchen for the preparation. Erin Soderberg Downing and her publisher Scholastic have organized a book tour for her upcoming middle school novel, Just Keep Walking. She will be touring through our area to talk about her new novel. TMS grade six and TES grades four and five are two of the lucky schools she is visiting during her book tour. We were chosen for the National Report Card testing, and fifty eighth graders took part in reading and writing tests. The test is taken anonymously by students all around the country, eighteen schools in Massachusetts, and the US Department of Education uses the data and demographic information to get a picture of how students are doing around the country. The test administrators were very impressed with how seriously our students took the test and how well behaved they were. The Palace Friendship Group has a frail trip to go bowling this week, which is always a great experience for all involved. At the high school, congratulations to the theater department on a great performing of The Wizard of Oz. Congratulations to Gianna Donato on scoring her one thousandth career point for the girls' basketball team. The team is having an outstanding season with a fourteen and one record and being ranked number two in the latest Division Four rankings. Many seniors have begun to receive acceptance letters from colleges and universities. Congratulations and best of luck to all of you as you continue to receive responses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bari.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to take item nine B out of order.
Can I have a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero zero. Back to Flanagan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, last meeting, we had representatives from, or cast members of The Wizard of Oz from a high school present to us. Today, we're excited to invite the Tingsborough Elementary School Student Council here for a very special presentation. So at this point, without further ado, I'm going to kick it right to our student council.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here tonight. We would like to start by introducing ourselves. My name is Gwen Korgalakis. I'm a fifth grader and president of the TES Student Council.
My name is Lucas Wilson. I am a fourth grader and vice president of TES Student Council.
My name is Parker Donovan. I am a fifth grader and a member of the Mathletes Club.
My name is Michael Mello. I'm a fourth grader and a member of the Mathletes Club.
My name is Lucy Balsias. I am a fifth grader and member of the Reading Ambassadors.
My name is Joe Ofisalhade. I am a fourth grader and a member of Reading Ambassadors.
You might have noticed that we are all members of enrichment programs offered at TES. Teachers and staff members put together these enrichment programs for students to join. We thought we would use this time to talk about the different enrichment programs that are offered before and after school.
TES Student Council serves as the voice of the student body, composed of dedicated young leaders who strive to make a positive impact within their school community. We support various fundraisers, and this year, our charity of choice is the Make-A-Wish Foundation. This month, we will hold a fundraiser with Valentine estimation jars. In April, we will participate in Earth Day, and as an act of service, we clean the TES grounds. In May, we support the Science Expo by making posters and helping to set it up.
TES Reading Ambassadors' main goal is to promote our love of reading throughout the cause of TES. We have a weekly segment on the morning news and have created Reading Ambassador book, recommendation bookmarks for students to use in the library. We are planning a reading themed door decorating contest and are looking forward to helping TES prepare for our visiting authors, Erin Soderberg later this month, and Josh Book in March.
Mathletes is made up of fourth and fifth graders that enjoy giving their brains a math workout. Each week, we are presented with five challenging Math Olympiad questions and two Sudoku puzzles to solve. They are challenging. We tackle the problems together and use teamwork to solve as many as we can.
The TES Telegram is a school newspaper. We work independently or as a group and write about topics of our choice. We can write articles, create comics, highlight sports statistics, and add word searches. One of the highlights in the process is peer editing. It gives us the sense of being a real newspaper editor. The TES Telegram is published three times a school year.
Another enrichment program is called the Escape Room. Students follow clues, solve puzzles, and answer questions in order to escape the classroom. Don't worry, the teacher lets us leave even if we don't escape.
In robotics club, students use the design process to create a vehicle able to travel using, travel long distances using forms of energy like electricity or kinetic energy. Members of this club brainstorm ideas for supplies, draft models, sketch prototypes, then build and complete their project.
The Lego Club is always a top choice for students. Each time they meet, students have the choice of open play or specific challenges that support STEM. Challenges include exploring parts of a structure, how force affects structures, and the design process.
Our seasonal crafting club explores different materials and artist methods to create beautiful seasonal-inspired crafts. They just finished their felt hat project in which they had to learn pidding and how to use a sewing machine. Carson Club was a big hit with students learning the basic letters and how to write their names.
We have a new enrichment club this year, learning American Sign Language. This class is not just about learning hand signs. It's about fostering communication and an understanding of the ways people express themselves.
Code Club is designed to introduce students to various coding software. Each time they meet, students are introduced to student-friendly websites that teach coding in a fun way through games and challenges. Participants in the program can't believe that they're actually learning something because they're having so much fun playing.
Our ski club is often gliding this winter. Students get picked up at TES on Friday at three PM and head to the Shoba Valley Ski Area to shred some powder for the afternoon.
This year at TES, we are participating in a new program in our cafeteria. We are all trying to be Super Cafe All-Stars. If we are showing our stripes in the cafeteria, we can earn a possum ticket. That's a play on words from our Stripes mascot Dakota the Tiger. Each Friday, you put all your tickets into a jar for your grade. If your ticket is drawn, you get to choose from a list of prizes. Most popular so far has been the option to be a lunchtime DJ on Fridays.
Finally, we just participated in the Great Kindness Challenge. TES is a kindness certified school, and we joined over twenty million students in over forty thousand schools to promote kindness. Each classroom was given a checklist of random acts of kindness to perform. As a school, we talked about continuing those random acts of kindness beyond just that week. We want to thank our special TES morning broadcasters, Dr. Flanagan, Mr. Woodlock, Mr. Messina, and Mr. Hogan, who did a great job taking over our morning news program. Mr. Messina is a natural in front of the camera.
The fifth graders wanted to end this presentation with some of our favorite memories of TES. For me, I don't have a favorite memory, but my favorite year at TES was fourth grade where I made so many new friends and had an amazing teacher.
Me and Lucy have a shared memory of fifth grade science class.
Our friend Ty mispronounced buoyancy as Beyonce.
Dr. Flanagan, Mr. Woodlock, Mr. Messina, Bari Teek, and dedicated school committee members, thank you for showing your stripes and working hard to support our teachers and staff at TES. We appreciate you taking the time to hear from us this evening and hope you will be able to come to some of our end of year events.
Awesome.
I think that's it, Mr. Chair.
That was incredible.
Well, guys.
Thank you, guys, for coming out. You are the reason that we do this. We volunteer our time to support you guys. So thank you. Thank you to your teachers, because obviously, they're doing a great job with you guys. Thank you to the parents for bringing the kids out tonight. It means the world to us. It's our favorite time when we do this, is when the kids from the schools represent, come out, do their presentations in front of us, because it makes what we do worth doing. So thank you. I'm going to open it up to the group. If you guys have any questions or comments, I'll start with Jeff.
So first off, awesome job for all of you, and I know a few of you were here last year doing this presentation. The fifth graders, what were some of your favorite things about TES? And what are you looking forward to in the middle school? And for the fourth graders, what are you looking forward to being the top of, the top of a school and being able to show your stripes to the younger students?
Um, well, I know I'm looking forward to being in the middle school. I just think that it will be like, I'm excited to be in like a higher level of school because I've been at an elementary school for so many years.
Um, I don't, being on top of the school, it's probably going to be exciting because I feel like we're going to have lots of new stuff to learn, and that's pretty much my favorite part. For me, I'm very excited to go to middle school, and I'm excited to go more in depth on everything. But if I had to choose one thing, it would definitely be going more in depth in science, mainly animal biology.
I think I'd have to agree with Lucas.
I am definitely looking forward to middle school, to go into like different classes and to like learn more things.
Uh, for me, I don't really know, but I think I'm going to go with Michael and Lucas.
I enjoyed hearing about all the different clubs that the school offers. I'm sure that you all have been a part of at least one of the clubs. What was your favorite club that you got to participate in? It doesn't have to be this year, just in your whole elementary school career.
Oh, my favorite is definitely participating in Student Council.
Yeah, I really love Student Council, too.
Hard decision, but for me, Mathletes.
I think Mathletes was my favorite club.
Um, it's a tough decision, but I really enjoy Student Council. I like helping people.
My favorite is probably Reading Ambassadors.
Right. Thank you. Hi, guys.
Hi.
Hi.
Nice to see you waving waves. That's awesome. Alright, so you guys are fourth and fifth graders, that like upper of the upper elementary. Before I came here tonight, I was with a bunch of kindergarteners talking to their Girl Scout group. What advice do you have for those little ones that are going to be coming up through over the next few years? Anybody, anything from like, don't eat this in the cafeteria to like, ta, take advantage of everything your teachers tell you? Like, anything that comes to mind. It doesn't have to be any big deal like craziness.
Well, if talking about the cafeteria, if ever, then I stay away from the chicken tenders.
Mine is don't get in trouble.
Listen to everything your teachers say and pay attention as much as you can and throw yourself at everything to get, and do the best you can.
Avoid the mac and cheese.
I would say, take notes on what your teachers tell you, so you can excel in whatever they're teaching you.
Uh, they should just keep doing well and just be nice to others.
Hello. Um, you guys are doing a fabulous job, and since you clearly are the experts on the elementary school, do you have advice for us that we could do to make the elementary school even better?
We can get rid of chicken nuggets.
Any thoughts on anything we could do to even make it a better?
Um, I don't have, I don't have any thoughts. I think it's perfect just the way it is right now.
I mean, I don't really have any thoughts, but there's one thing. In the cafeteria there should be a mandatory check every day to make sure the food is good. I ran into a chicken, a chicken patty that was hard as a brick. Couldn't eat it.
It's good, it's good to see that school cafeteria food hasn't changed in thirty years.
I hope Whitson's isn't watching.
I'll, I'll, I'll take the bullet on this one. This is my fault.
That's Mr. Messina's fault.
I try to take it, Joe.
Trying to work on my jokes.
Then I guess my other question is, do you have a particular favorite subject that you guys all enjoyed?
Um, I enjoy math.
I enjoy writing.
For me, definitely science.
I'd say either science or social studies.
I mean, I enjoy it all, but I definitely like ELA.
I like social studies.
Good subject.
Ms. Puma is actually a school teacher.
I am. I teach history.
I don't have any questions for you, but I do have one comment. You're the last of the three schools to come and present to us, and I have to tell you that out of the three, you are definitely the best dressed. All look fantastic tonight. Probably better dressed than we are. So thank you very much for coming tonight. You guys did a fantastic job.
So again, thank you guys for coming out. I won't ask any questions because I asked all the good ones. We'll work on chicken nuggets with Mr. Messina. He negotiates the contract for the school one.
I, I think we can maybe make arrangements with Ms. Kavanaugh to have this crew come sit with Mr. Meas and myself, and we'll get some feedback from you guys right to the kitchen manager.
At this time, we're actually going to take a short recess, so we can get some pictures with the kids. So I'll take a motion to take a five-minute recess.
So moved?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Upstained? That carries.
So it looks like it will be a pretty heavy schedule. We'll be meeting at least bi-weekly to really talk about the furniture, talk about the install, talk about delivery, make sure all the technology we have is in place. So it'll be, it'll be comprehensive. I do have to say, though, as I, as I was looking at the, the long view of the schedule, it was crazy to think that a year from now, we'll be moving furniture in, or furniture will be arriving, and we'll be setting classrooms up. It's just amazing to think that it's gone, it's going by pretty quickly, but it's exciting to see the end in sight. Seems like we started this in two thousand and eleven. So, so that's what we have at that. As you know, next week, we have more classroom furniture being delivered to the middle school. The following week, the week of the twenty-sixth, JCJ will come. They will do professional development for our teachers to show how the room can be configured, how the furniture can be used, those types of things. Additionally, on the contractor level, the OPM, our OPM for Left Field, is looking at potential items that were VE'd or value engineered out of the project early when we were trying to get to a number. There may be some opportunity to put some things back into the project, and some of those things would be timely now, such that we could have the electrical put in the right spot and in those types of conversations. So that is all being discussed right now behind the scenes. We will go deeper into that on Thursday. And at our next school building committee meeting, I believe that there will be a presentation on potential items to be value engineered, potentially back into the project. Again, it's not to, it's not to go into contingency fund or anything like that. It's, it's to really capitalize on where we are at this point in the project based on our finances. In terms of the actual construction work itself, Building A, the downstairs exterior framing, is ongoing at this point. This week, they've been pouring concrete pads on top of the roof for all the mechanical units and such. And the electrical is wrapping up under Building B, which is central office and the gym. And I hope that all, actually, most of you were able to come last week. I hope you enjoyed the walkthrough and really got to get a sense or feel of the, the building coming together. So it's an exciting time. Hamdi today, Hamdi from Left Field was able to take four, he took about forty-eight drone shots. I only took four of them just for your review, but you can see the, the progression of the building at this point. And that, that right there is going to be a really cool space. That courtyard coming out of the cafeteria between the two academic wings, that is going to be a great space for kids. So it was nice to kind of get out there and really feel the school. I know it sounds weird, but it really, it was true. So, uh, so it's exciting. So that's what we are. Happy to answer any questions about the MSBA at this point, if I can.
Um, I would like to just thank Left Field and JCJ for being there.
Fontaine as well.
Fontaine Brothers as well, um, for taking us on that tour on, on a weekday, weekend day. To me, it was incredible. It was really neat to see this structure and look forward to the progress as it goes through in future walkthroughs. So thank you to everyone for coming out on a Saturday morning and giving up your time to allow us to do that.
And Mr. Chair, I think once we get the walls closed up and the foundation really poured, I think at some point, we'll start getting teachers over there so they can walk around and really kind of understand the space and see it a little bit. Again, we have not made decisions in terms of which wing will be sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. That's for a decision, decision for another day at this point. But, um, but just so they can get in there and really see it, it's, it's kind of exciting to be in there, so. So that's all we have for that.
Anyone else? Okay. Alright, teaching and learning. Mr. Woodlock?
Yeah, thank you. So our building administrators have conducted a mid-year review, kind of a formative check on where they are with their SDI objectives and initiatives. So I'm not going to give you all of it, because it's, they did a lot of work in sharing that, but I'm going to give you a few highlights, a couple of highlights from each building. But we'll start with the elementary school, and the key action here is providing interventions and extensions that meet the individual needs of all learners. I'm not going to read all of this to you, but the, the elementary school has done an incredible job of formatting their schedules so that they can utilize diagnostic testing to make sure that our kids are where they need to be, and if not, to get them additional assistance and/or extensions if they're ready to go further throughout this year. This is a, this is a big process and not easily accomplished. And I really want to give a, you know, a kudos to Mrs. Kavanaugh, especially Ms. Souza, Ms. Souza, who's done a lot of the organizing of this, and the teachers, because they've found ways to get these things incorporated into their daily schedule so that we can check regularly on student progress and make sure no one's falling behind. So really, really great work there. Three point one, in collaboration with the district leadership team, TES Leadership Team provides teachers with master-oriented feedback that is intended to improve and/or enhance instructional practice. This is something we've, we focused on quite a bit. We do a lot of, when we meet collectively, we spend a lot of our time talking about how we're going to provide teachers with feedback. And when we talk about master-oriented feedback, we're not just talking about great job or you need to do better, but specifically, what, what can we give them that's going to help make them better teachers? And really, the focus has been on, technically, we're doing evaluation, but we really want to focus on coaching and making sure that our teachers know we have their backs, but we also are going to push them to get better, and we're going to be there to support that. And if they need help, we're also going to be there to support that. So the elementary school, all schools have been doing a really good job, but specifically focusing on the elementary school with their key action three point one. We'll move on to the middle school, key action three point two. The TMS faculty will evaluate student progress and learning through responsive assessments and provide targeted feedback in a timely and authentic manner. This may sound familiar because it's kind of what I just talked about with the formative and diagnostic testing. At the middle school last year, admittedly, they would have said it was a bit scattered. It was kind of hit or miss depending on what grade level, so they've done a really good job incorporating teacher input to make sure that they create a system that's much more, I guess, equal with, with all grade levels, that students are getting formatively assessed through IXL maths, specifically, we've been focusing on, at regular intervals throughout the year, but at small intervals, intervals during class time each week. So, you know, again, similar to the elementary school, but a big job, and they've done a really nice, nice job with that. Three point one, the administrative team will facilitate the development and implementation of specific professional development offerings focused on providing students with multi-tiered universally designed, student-centered learning experience. The, the admin has continually revisited and provided resources for inclusive structures for the staff, specifically with our Keys to Learning Professional Development Contract. They've done a really nice job of being specific about what they're focused on and going in and making sure teachers are doing it. And teachers have been doing a great job about taking the professional development and implementing it right away. So it doesn't get lost in translation as, if there's one complaint people, we tend to get from teachers over the years with professional development, it's, it comes and it goes, and people forget about it. Everyone is collectively doing a good job to make sure that we're not wasting time and we're utilizing the resources that we have in front of us. Shifting to the high school, key action one point one, in collaboration with THS staff, assess the effectiveness of win. This is something they've spoken to you about in the past. Kudos to Mrs. Trainer and Mr. Ogden and the staff. They did their pilot last year. You heard from even students this You heard from even students this year about wind block. They've taken surveys from staff, from students. They're evolving with this. But what they've done is they've effectively implemented into with the schedule. Changing a schedule is never easy, and they've done that. They've given our students opportunities to get additional interventions as needed or social emotional time or time to meet with counselors, and they're not affecting the tier-one classroom schedules, which is great because no student's getting pulled from a history class or music class or art or E L A. They're in their classes when they need to be there, and if they need something else, they're getting it during wind block. We may not be 100% there, but that's the goal and we're definitely tracking and trending effectively. Lastly, 3.1A, the admin team will facilitate the development and implementation of specific professional development offerings focused on providing students. This is exactly what we talked about with the middle school. High school's been doing a really nice job there, too. Keys to literacy is in its first year at the high school, and teachers are just learning about it, whereas sixth grade through, K through sixth grade have already had that. So they're beginning to get an indication of what our elementary and middle school teachers and students have been exposed to. And when we're finished at the end of next year, K through 12 will all have had professor, professional development in the same strategy. So any student coming into the high school, they're gonna know, oh, these students will be able to do this, 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 and this because we know they've all been trained. Unless they come in somewhere else, and in that case, we'll, we'll teach them. They're still beginning the process with the admin for the support of this through P D, through March and May. There'll be a continued focus on M T S S and universal design for learning as we get into those March and May P D days, which are not keys to literacy. So we'll have time to reflect on where we are, get information from teachers and feedback from teachers, and identify what professional development opportunities we can offer them specific to each building. So people don't generally look forward to planning P D. I do. So this would be a great opportunity for us to make sure that we're getting teachers what they, what they're saying they need additional professional learning with. That's it on my end. So are there any questions for me? And again, these are sample, this is two from each. There's probably like upwards of seven or eight for each. So you can imagine all the work that's gone into our S D I this year. I think we're very confident that we're going to meet, if not exceed, almost all of our goals in our S D I. It's definitely trending that way. So that doesn't happen without an incredible amount of work from our administrators and teachers. So.
If I can, sorry. If I can say that to that, Mr. Chair, I think, you know, one of the things that we're probably most proud of is our S D I has not been a strategic plan. It's been on a shelf. It's been something that has driven the work that we've done for six years. It has been, it has evolved as we've evolved. It's, it's shifted as our needs have shifted, and it is something that it dovetails with what you're about to hear next from Mr. Messina. When we talk about our budget, when we talk about our resources and we need to make tough decisions, we don't take the easy way out. We don't pick up this year's budget and put it down next year. We go to our strategy, we see what we need, and we become reflective of that, and that drives the work that we do. So it really does kind of serve as the spine of the through line for everything that we do in the district. We take great pride in that. So I just wanted to make sure that we provided some kind of update tonight as to where we are, knowing that we're gonna have a budget conversation and then have further conversations and make some decisions. But it's all gonna come back to the S D I as our, as our through line. So that's all I wanted to add.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Woodlock, for all that.
Thank you.
DECA overnight field trip?
Yes, Mr. Chair, in your drive is a request, we talked about it last time, from Principal Ogden to have 11 students from Tingsboro go March 7th, 8th, and 9th to Boston to compete in the DECA competition. We have 11 students. We'll share a bus going there with Groton Dunstable. We will ride home with Groton Dunstable, but when we're there, we will not room with Groton Dunstable. It'll be a Tingsboro school event. This has been a very successful event for Mr. Richall and students, I think in all grades, 9th through, 9th through 12 will be part of this. So so just looking for formal approval for an overnight trip. March 7th to 9th, I think the cost is $500, but they're gonna work to defer that a little bit with fundraising.
Can I get a motion to approve the DECA overnight field trip?
I would like to make a motion to approve the DECA overnight field trip.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? That cares. Will they be taking our little bus or will they be?
No, I don't think, I don't think so. We're gonna share the cost with G D.
And if they have time, depending on how they do it, if they'd like to present, we'd like to see them.
Absolutely.
Come in afterwards and let us know how they did. Would be awesome. Now we go to fiscal year 2022, 2025, budget presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the sheet is very similar to what I presented at your last meeting. New to it, slightly off-screen, is the revenues. Mr. Woodlock, if we could just slide it up a little bit. About three-quarters the way down in blue. The summary revenues are on that sheet as 2.9 million, slightly over that figure. Some $300,000 less than last year's number. And Mr. Woodlock, if we could go to the revenue sheet on that. And this is basically a summary of the revenues other than the school committee budget. Grant revenues, you can see, is the largest driver of the decrease in revenue. And we did anticipate that as last year was the last $300,000 in our COVID money that was applied to this budget. So we did know we were gonna have $300,000 hole with the loss of that revenue. The other main driver on this is the current circuit breaker revenue projection. That is based upon this year's receipts and how they compared to last year's receipts. Those, those two figures in and of themselves drive the revenue decrease from last year into this year. And Mr. Woodlock, one more time, if we could go back up to the summary page, please. Sorry.
Whatever you need, Mr. Messina.
So plugging in those 2.9 other revenues comes down to the current school committee budget request, which is just below the screen.
Back out. Gotcha.
It's not easy driving those, believe me. I, when you're not here, I go through this, too. So so the current school committee budget request is sitting at slightly over $24 million or roughly 1.2 million above what our budget is for this year, which is a 5.3% growth. We know that we have a target growth of 2.7%. So we're looking to get that growth figure down to some $616,000. So at this point in time, we know we have about little over $500,000 to reconcile through some adjustments and through some reviews of this budget over the next two weeks prior to the presentation of the initial final budget to you and to the finance committee on the 27th. Superintendent and myself have met many times in the past week since the budget subcommittee meeting. Every expense, every revenue is gonna be reviewed. I've mentioned to the budget subcommittee, we are in a utility renewal cycle for our supplies for natural gas and electricity. Gonna take another hard look at that within the next two weeks. The current out-of-district roster for tuitions is a very volatile roster. We're gonna continue to review that. There are some additional needs that we've talked about. Superintendent, superintendents mentioned a literacy coach. Not presently in this figure. How we may be able to work towards that. We have a meeting with the town manager next week to, again, look, look through other potential revenue sources.
If I could just add there, we also talked about a potential B C B A and whatnot. So we, we actually have an A C meeting tomorrow morning with the administrative team. I don't know if you were gonna talk about that.
I was, but that's.
Sorry, to, to really say, where are we going from here? So go ahead, Joe. Keep going.
So as the superintendent mentioned, we're gonna start with the administrative group tomorrow to start making a review. And again, as the superintendent mentioned, we're not looking to just take what we're currently doing and place it into next year. It's not, it's not how we've operated for many years, as the superintendent mentioned. So we'll get there. I'm confident we'll get there. I've, I've been doing this a number of years and we always get there. That's the one thing I know. We get to the number we need to get to and that the door is open in August and the kids are gonna be here. So we do have a budget subcommittee meeting scheduled for the 27th to, to review where we're at prior to. And then the, the meeting on the 27th with the finance committee.
I just want to add one thing. I think it's great. Appreciate it. I'm looking forward to working with Colin for the first time as the decision maker on the budget as well. You know, it was great working with Matt the past couple of years where we were allowed to really come together behind closed doors and kind of figure this out as a community, which was great. So looking forward to working with Colin and Kat this year for the first time. But as, as Joe said, we'll figure it out. We'll get there. And we'll make good decisions for kids and staff.
That's it? All right. Thank you, Mr. Messina, for that update.
So just to clarify, we will present the initial budget at our next school committee meeting on the February 27th, which will be a joint meeting with the FinCom. And by then, we'll have, we'll be at 616,000 for growth or 2.7% increase.
All right, perfect. And we're gonna stay with Mr. Messina and go right into finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So for signing of bills, there were eight bill warrants presented to the committee tonight. I do have them all back approved. As always, in your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts. For signing of payrolls, since we last did this, two payrolls, the January 15th and January 29th payrolls. And again, in your drive is the warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts for those. And that is it for finance.
All right. Thank you. School committee discussion. Mari.
Thanks to elementary school kids for coming today and presenting. They did a really good job. I was impressed. That's all for this time.
Great. Thank you. So again, first off, the elementary school did an outstanding job as usual. They always shine when they come here. And it's always great to hear what's going on at the school and just seeing how well-prepared those kids are coming up and getting ready to go into the middle school as well. I had an opportunity to see, was it VAS this past weekend? Our middle and high school students were absolutely incredible. The amount of talent in that group is second to none. They're just an unbelievable group. Over this past week, I did have an opportunity to go through each of our schools, kind of our annual tradition with both Mrs. Stanton and Mrs. Thanis. And we'll each be talking about one of the, one of the schools. I did end up picking the middle school. And if there was ever a reminder why we need a new building, I was walking in the front door. You know, certainly that building has, has served its time. It has served us well, but it is definitely time to, to move on. In comparison to the other buildings, the lighting is certainly not there. It's just, the rooms are small and our students and our teachers, I think, are doing the absolute best that they can with what they have in that building. So I think they're all gonna be very, very happy once we're able to move from there into the new location. But we did get an opportunity to go into each of the classrooms and just kind of see what the students are working on. They're all working very diligently. I don't know how students and teachers are able to handle the disruption of us all walking into a classroom. I know I would have paused, turned around, and lost where I was if it was, if it was at my work. So I don't know how they just keep going as if nothing's happening, but it's incredible how they do that. But overall, I think it was, it was a great tour. It was, it was really great to be able to see the students working hard, how, all the efforts that our teachers are putting in to make sure that they're, they're ready for that, that next level, that next step.
So I'm gonna talk about our walkthrough at the high school. Thanks to Mr. Ogden and Mrs. Trainer for taking us through, Dr. Flanagan as well. It was a really great walkthrough. It was, we were there early in the morning. And it was amazing to see how engaged the students were and some of the tactics that the staff was using to keep them engaged. You know, Mr. Redman was walking around, you know, asking different, like, brain teaser questions just to keep the kids engaged. And it was, it was really great to see it live and in action. We hear about it, but to see it firsthand was, was wonderful. I was particularly impressed with the biology lab. When we got to go in there briefly, they were just starting a lab. And I didn't feel like I was in high school. I felt like I was in, like, Pfizer or something, you know. It, it felt like we were in something beyond high school. The way that Doc Rav puts these labs together, it's really impressive. And these students, we're very fortunate to have such wonderful teachers that are putting our students in such great, like, real-life situations. We also got to go into the computer programming lab, and it was pretty cool because we had a student show us one of the programs that was prepared and then alter it right on the fly to show us a, a change. So the programming that they're learning, you know, hopefully they're able to take this into their future. Maybe we have some budding programmers here in Tingsborough, but you know, it, we didn't throw them off their game by asking them to change it. They just did it. So it was wonderful. We also stopped at Student Services and had a good discussion there. And kind of to piggyback after, after Mr. Woodlock, we had a good discussion around the wind block and what some of the uses of wind block are that Student Services is able to offer different programming during wind block to help students with applications for college or even some of the mindfulness meetings that they're having with our new counselor that we got on last year. You know, it's, it's great that we're able to offer this much-needed counseling and this much-needed mindfulness to our students without them missing class time. And then just in general, you know, similar to what Mr. Bo said, congratulations to our theater team. What an amazing job. Not just the actors and actresses, but also the, the people behind the scenes. You know, this, they're like the unsung heroes of the show, and I actually came to see it twice. It was, it was incredible and congratulations. And also thank you for putting on such, it, it's an asset to our community. So thank you for putting on such a great show. That's about it. I'll stop there. Thank you.
All right. I will cover Tingsborough Elementary since the other two schools have already been covered. It, if you've ever walked into that school, and I think every time we see the students present here, it's a very special community in that building. And so it's, it's always great to see the kids in action. They, they, to Jeff's point, they don't even bat an eye when we walk in the room. We went into one fifth-grade classroom during snack time and they were just like, hey, what's up? Like, they, they are just, they're such well-behaved kids. We were there during Ms. Shepherd's American Heart Association presentation and floored by how well-behaved the K through 2 elementary school students were, just sitting there, just like totally engaged in the presentation, excited about the heart health challenge for the month that they're doing. And it's just, it's such a testament when we see that behavior from the kids, that they're like engaged and respectful and excited to be there for the community that Mrs. Kavanaugh and Mrs. Souza and Dr. Salmon have put together in that building. It's just, it's a really special place to be. We did spend quite a bit of time in the specialist areas talking with Mrs. Maraca, who, much like at the high school level, Mrs. Maraca's class showed us some of the things that they were working on. There was a fourth-grade class in there at the time working on some coding, and they were like, check out my Boston Red Sox thing that they did. It's just so cool when you think about what fourth-grade computer science was 30 years ago when it was the Oregon Trail, to see these kids like actually designing stuff instead of dying of dysentery. That was, that was really cool to see. The most time we spent, though, in the specialist classrooms was in the library, which has come a very long way in the last six or seven years since Mrs. LaRochelle has taken it over. A lot of outdated books have been purged. A lot of reorganization has happened. And Mr. Bo asked the question, you know, is there a way that we can support, as a community, support the library? And she does have an Amazon wishlist that I'll share on the Tingsborough Parents page for anybody watching that might be interested in supporting the library. But just thank you to Mrs. Kavanaugh and thank you, Dr. Flanagan, for taking such a large chunk of your morning to walk us around. It was well and much appreciated. And another huge congratulation to the cast and crew and parents and friends of the Tingsborough Theater for that show. I was unknowingly in the front row. I thought I bought second-row tickets on Friday night, and my little actress, who does not do productions in town quite yet, was floored. And so to watch her face, I think, said everything that I needed to say about that show. So good job, guys. So good job, guys. Killed it. That's all I got.
Okay. I want to thank the elementary school for coming today. They did a great, fabulous job. It's such a testament to the students and the faculty and the staff. Also, kudos to the drama department for, again, putting on a wonderful, amazing show. They're keeping the tradition alive with their series of amazing shows after each other. And thank the ability for us to be able to go and tour the middle school over the weekend. That was great. And yeah, and have a good week, everyone. I actually have a good vacation because we'll be back after vacation.
Well, unfortunately, I have to go last and follow up everyone and say the same exact thing that everyone else has already said. So thank you. I used to like sitting over there. I could say something first. Kids were amazing. I, I mean, they get better every year. It's, it's just incredible how, how composed they are, how well-prepared, and, and funny sometimes. I also got to see the, the show, Wizard of Oz. I don't think I've missed a show in the last 10, 12 years, and no disrespect to the past shows, but this has got to be my favorite one. This was amazing. Again, the cast was, was perfect. They were straight on. Some of the pratfalls that they were pulling during, during, without any stunt doubles was amazing. The amount of work the parents did, creating, helping to create some of those costumes. I know one of our former members, Amy Pazerski, was really well-involved with that. She saw all those flying monkey costumes. She had, she made them all on her living room floor, did a wonderful job with that. Also, again, yes, there's vacation coming up. We won't have another meeting before that. I hope everybody has a really restful vacation. Hopefully, we'll, we won't have any snow before then or after then. I'm happy with this winter going on, but thanks to everyone for, for everything I just mentioned. That's it.
I'll mention it, too. You won't be last to say it, but the show, the show was great. I thought Toto did a great job personally. Yes, the kids did great, and the behind-the-scenes stuff is always vital, vital role that they play, mainly unsung. So having a daughter that did a lot of sound work at a few of the plays when she was here, I know it takes a lot behind the scenes as well. So congratulations, guys. Thank you.
And I did not forget about you, Mr. Woodlock. However, I did skip you.
I think it's been said, so. I'll leave it to you. I'm going to go in a different direction. Our true north statement says we value all people in our school community, and I think it's important when you hear about the opportunities for kids, student council, mathletes, reading ambassadors, Lego club, crafting club, ski club. When we talk about valuing all people, that's what it's about, providing inclusive environment that gives every student opportunity to gain success somewhere in the school. And I think I would love to see that, that broad funnel carry all the way through all three schools. Unfortunately, as kids get older, it narrows a little bit, and sometimes you get to high school and it's theater or athletics, and, and there are others, there are some other things, but it's not as broad-based as it is at the elementary school. And I think at the elementary school, kids are finding themselves, and they're willing to try things, and I wish we, we need to find a way to encourage that and keep that broad funnel coming all the way up. Because as I listen to these kids, and I saw each kid find their own path and passion at a young age, we need to, to continue to foster that, because it truly is about giving all kids as many opportunities as they can to be as successful as possible. So I was thrilled with that presentation and to see different kids with, with different experiences and different things that they're, they're passionate about. So we, we need to harness that and, and grow that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the elementary school students as well. To our teachers, they did you proud tonight. They truly did. Those kids are amazing, and you're a big part of it. So thank you to our staff. Thank you to our administration over there for the great work that they do every day. And that is it for me. We do not have a need for executive session tonight, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? That carries. Thank you and have a good night.